Call the Village Board meeting for Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. First item actually is a reminder, which I haven't done myself, is to turn off your cell phones, please, so we don't have that kind of noise. Thank you. Next is roll call, if we may, from the Village Clerk.
Trustee Conley.
Yeah.
Trustee.
Yeah.
Trustee Medei.
Present.
Trustee Bishki.
Present.
President Daley.
Present, all present and accounted for. Thank you, and I think we're all muted now on the Zoom call. Thank you very much. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask our Village Attorney Lance to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise and join me. Everyone who's physically present, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next item is approval of minutes from September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to second to approve. Any further conversation? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Conley, Trustee Cozak.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. The next item is approval of expenditures for the amount of six million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
New discussion?
Approval expenditures as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the expenditures as presented. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Cozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is liquor license request. We have two items. First one is a request from Mr. Tyrone Lufman. If I pronounced that correctly. Oh, not quite sure. You look like Tyrone. For a class one F, for a class F-one liquor license for Smash Burger located at Woodfield Gatherings, seventeen twenty-one East Gulf Road. This is a new license, so please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Irene Bahr, B-A-H-R, and I'm the attorney representing Smash Burger in Illinois. This is, Mr. Lufman is one of the officers, and this is a new location for us. We are hoping to be able to open sometime around Thanksgiving now. The date has moved up, as you know, with construction. It comes, it goes, and they're hoping to open a little earlier than what our letter said. It's a fast casual kind of operation. They have locations around the country as well as other ones in Illinois, and this will be their first one in Schaumburg. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Questions, comments from the board?
We actually have one over by Portillo's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think we did. I remember it was Marilyn's favorite place for french fries. Got it.
Well.
What I meant was that they don't have a current one.
We understand.
Yeah.
So we're looking forward to them coming back. Marilyn will be running over on your lunch, I'll send.
Yeah, so are they, and they're opening different locations. They have a couple of locations in Chicago. They're going to be opening, so they're starting to open more places.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from this side? No? All right. So, starting tomorrow, you can apply for the license upstairs, Mayor's Office, Liquor Commissioner's Office, and pending a review of the application and approval by, or fingerprinting and then approval by the Police Department, a license will be issued.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Well, you're not going to stay?
Next item is a request from.
But.
Okay, next item is a request from, pronounced Zia, Ugani? No, not trying to pronounce this. For a one-class A liquor license for, I'm not going to pronounce this right. Banchan Restaurant. Banchan Restaurant located at fourteen oh eight East Gulf Road, new owner. Are you here? No, there's not that many people here, so it's kind of easy. No. All right, we will defer this item till the next meeting.
They're not participating online either.
Oh, I guess, yeah, that's a good question. Would they be participating? So the name, Zia. Anyone up there in Zoom? There's a Jack. Are you waving to us, a Jack, up there, or you're trying to identify?
No.
Don't we, don't we love technology? Yes, and I'm in the IT field. I don't see a name up there that looks like it might be, so, and nobody's indicating that they're interested, so we'll go ahead and move on. We'll defer that item then to the next meeting. Next is the Consent Agenda. It'll be read in its entirety, voted on as one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the Village Clerk, so they can be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed further under Committee Reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on Consent Agenda. And I will ask the Village Clerk, Marilyn Carter, to read the Consent Agenda for us, please.
Okay. Number one, correspondence. The motion would be to approve the request from Northern Illinois University MPA program to hold a raffle on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, at Top Golf, two thousand and fifty Progress Parkway. Two liquor licenses. A, the motion would be to ratify the request from Mr. Todd Winger of the Schreiker House Preservation Trust for one Class D, one-day liquor license for an outdoor jazz concert on Friday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty, from five PM until six thirty PM at the Schreiker House, six forty-five Meacham Road. Waived fee. Three, proclamations. Manufacturing Month, October, two thousand and twenty. B, Empty Shoes, Empty Hearts Day, October ninth, two thousand and twenty. C, Extra Mile Day, November first, two thousand and twenty. Four, Engineering and Public Works Committee. The motion will be to approve participation in the National Cooperation Purchasing Alliance and award the contract for the public safety billing range and ventilation improvements with FH Passion of Chicago, Illinois, and approve issuance of a purchase order in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand, one dollar and thirty-one cents. Five, Finance, Legal Administration, Administrative and General Government. The, A, the motion would be to approve the Finance Department monthly report for August, two thousand and twenty. B, the motion would be to approve membership in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and that members, that the membership in the dues, in the dues amount of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, three hundred and thirty, oh geez, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four and forty dollars and twenty-two cents be paid. C, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance amending the Schaumburg Village Code, Chapter forty-one, Section forty-one point oh one, Village Fee Schedule. D, the motion would be to adopt the proposal from Andrews Medical Building LTD of Arlington Heights, Illinois, for ambulance building services and the, and authorize the village manager to execute an agreement for a term of one year in end, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, with three one-year optional renewals based on the approved budget. E, the motion would be to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to bind insurance coverage with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc. of Rowley Meadows, Illinois, in amount up to six hundred and six, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for the twenty nineteen, twenty-one insurance program prior to October first, two thousand and twenty. F, the motion would be to approve the purchase of workers' compensation excess loss insurance from Safety National Casualty Corporation of St. Louis, Missouri, at a rate of point two five six two percent of estimated payroll and nine thousand five hundred broker fee for a total estimated cost of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, and approve the required resolution. G, the motion would be to approve membership in the Schaumburg Business Association, and that the membership dues in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars be paid. H, the motion will be to approve the Community Development, Development Block Grant, CDVG, COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program, and direct staff to implement the program. I, the motion would be to approve the monthly budgets, budget status report for September, two thousand and twenty. J, the motion would be to approve a resolution authorizing a Class VI tax incentive for Amperlo Systems, Inc., located at seven ten Remington Road, Schaumburg, Illinois.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a correction. Under B, it's printed as thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents. Is it three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents?
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
Three in there. No wonder I was confused. Yes.
Thank you.
J, the motion would be to approve a resol, oh, I did that one. Okay, we've got that. We've got six Transportation Committee. The motion would be to accept the application from Holiday Airways LLC to operate a flight school at the Schaumburg Regional Airport for the purpose of flight training and approve the required resolution.
Paul, please.
Okay. Paul, President Daley. Seven, Planning, Building and Development Committee. A, the motion would be to amend the ordinance requirements for swimming pool spa barriers. And zoning, eight, zoning board of appeals. The motion would be to approve a special use for an internet auto sales facility for B and G Brothers, Inc., eighteen oh three West Wise Road. B, the motion would be to approve an amendment to Municipal Code Title fifteen, Land Using, Chapter one fifty-four zoning pertaining to restaurants. C, the motion would be to approve an amendment to Municipal Code Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four zoning pertaining to off-street parking and loading.
Paul, please.
Paul for Trustee Cozak. D, the motion would be to approve a special use for an internet auto sales facility for Strata Motorsports, six forty-one Estes Avenue. E, the motion would be to approve a preliminary and final plat of resolution, landscape variations, parking variations, and building setback variations for Woodfield Village Green, Plat number three, fourteen hundred to fifteen seventy East Gulf Road. F, the motion would be to approve a site plan amendment, building and site plan modifications, rezone from B five to B two, landscape variations, parking variations, building setback variations, building height variations, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for at-home redevelopment, thirteen twenty-five to thirteen fifty-five North Meacham Road. G, the motion would be to approve a preliminary and final plat of consolidation, site plan amendment, parking lot addition, rezone from B five to B two, landscape variations, parking variation, building height variation, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Costco improvements, parking lot additions, thirteen seventy-five North Meacham Road. Nine, award a bid. The motion would be to award a bid for the two thousand and twenty Sewer Rehabilitation Program to Profiting Pipeline of Ottawa, Illinois, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents. Ten, resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as resolution twenty dash zero seven eight, authorizing village manager to execute an agreement between the Village of Schaumburg and Andrews Medical Building Billing LTD for ambulance billing services. D, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number twenty dash zero seven nine, authorizing the village manager to direct Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Service, Inc., to bind property and liability insurance coverage. C, the resolution would be to adopt as resolution R dash oh eight oh, authorizing the village manager to acquire work, workers' compensation excess insurance through the Safety National Casualty Corporation. D, the motion would be to adopt as resolution twenty dash zero eight one, approving and authorizing a six B classification for seven ten Remington Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, ambulance foe systems. B, the motion would be to.
Paul.
Paul, okay.
That's Tom.
That's.
Mayor.
The mayor's, yeah. That would be authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute a license agreement by and between the Village of Schaumburg and Holiday Airways LLC. F, the motion would be to adopt as resolution R twenty dash zero eight two, authorizing the sponsorship and naming rights agreement between Salve Sports Enterprises LLC and Wintrust Financial Corporation, and authorizing the issuance of a formal approval letter and acknowledgement. Eleven ordinances. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eight two, amending Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-three, Section one fifty-three point oh three, of Schaumburg Village Code relative to swimming pools. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eight three, amending Title three, various sections of the fee schedule, two thousand and twenty-one, general fees and community development fees. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash eighty-four, granting a special use for an internet auto sales facility for B and G Brothers, Inc., eighteen oh three West Wise Road. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eight four, amending Title fifteen, Land Usage, Title one fifty-four zoning of the Municipal Code pertaining to restaurants. E, that was pulled by Trustee Cozak, and that would be amending Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four zoning of the Municipal Code pertaining to off-street parking and loading. F, that, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash oh eighty-five, granting a special use for an internet auto facility, auto sales facility for Strata Motorsports, six forty-one Estes Avenue. And no, because eighty-four, we pulled the.
No, we pulled, so eighty-five was D.
That was eighty-four. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, then this would be eighty-six. Okay. The ordinance would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash oh eighty-six, granting a special use for an internet auto sales facility for Strata Motorsports, six forty-one Estes Avenue. Okay, this is. G, the motion would be to adopt, to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eighty-seven, granting a preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision, landscape variations, parking variations, and building setback variations for Woodfield Village Green, Plat number three, fourteen hundred to fifteen seventy East Gulf Road. H, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eight eight, granting a site plan amendment, building and site plan modifications, rezone from Bill B five to B two, landscape variations, parking variations, building regional center design review for at-home redevelopment, fourteen, or thirteen twenty-five to thirteen fifty-nine North Meacham Road. The motion would, I, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number twenty dash zero eight nine, granting preliminary and final plat, plat of consolidation, site plan amendment, parking lot addition, rezone from B five to B two, landscape variations, parking variations, building height variation, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Costco improvements, parking lot addition, thirteen seventy-five North Meacham Road. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I have a slight correction. Under item seven, Planning, Building and Development Committee, A, the first thing says, recommendation to the Village Board to amend ordinance requirements for swimming pool slash spa barriers, but when you read the ordinance, it didn't include the word spa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be.
Which number is it?
Number, number eleven, A.
Well, that's actually not A. If you turn the page, it's like additional language that wasn't deleted, because A begins on the next page.
No, this is.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at item eleven ordinances.
Eleven.
Yeah.
And item A says, you know.
Right, says regarding swimming pool spa slash spa barrier requirements. Is that not part of the ordinance?
No, so if you look back at seven A, there are two headings on seven A, and that's where my confusion was. Go back to seven A, where it starts, and it does refer to swimming.
I'm sorry, seven, five, six, yes, seven A.
See, it says seven A, but if you turn to the description on the next page, which is the heading again, it.
I don't have that. I have zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
On the next page.
Right, but look, it's A again, A again, and it talks about the internet.
Right, well, under each one, you have.
There are two As.
No, this is Planning, Building and Development Committee, A.
Oh, okay.
This is zoning board of appeals, A. The question is whether or not the word spa is appropriate.
Yeah, the word spa needs to be in the item eleven A.
So you're saying.
What's, where are you at with the eleven?
He's, so what you're saying, Trustee Dunham, is that it's missing from under ordinances, which is.
The word spa barriers is missing, or words spa barriers are missing under the ordinance, ordinance eleven A. It just said, it's, it says relative to swimming pool.
Yeah.
And if we're going to be, you know, particularly correct, it should say swimming pool slash spa barriers.
Okay, will the attorney please double check that?
Yeah, it's appropriate. What I want to make sure of.
So does he finds it.
Is that the ordinance itself is correct.
Yes. Yep, got it? I had it. Here we go. Doesn't say spa on it. Doesn't make reference to spas.
I'm not sure why a spa would need a barrier.
Well, you could have an outdoor spa.
Yeah, one of those hot tub things.
Hot tub, okay.
I guess we'd have to look at the original ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, if we're going to be consistent, it ought to say the same thing under the item on the consent agenda and then also on the ordinance.
Correct. I think we should pull it.
Motion to pull that one.
Yeah, and what I'd say, the motion would be to table it and continue it to the October twenty-seventh meeting, because it's a zoning matter. We want the date to be specific.
So moved.
Motion and a second to pull this item, both under Section seven, Planning, Building and Development Committee, item A. Is there a matching ordinance or resolution to that?
Yeah, eleven A.
Eleven A.
Okay, section eleven A, which has to do with ordinances, so unfortunately, that's ordinance was called out as ordinance twenty dash zero eight two.
It was, yes.
Right, so.
So. We're asking for those.
Do we have to renumber all the rest of them?
Correct, so under eleven B, that would become eighty-two.
Do they, wait, can I ask a procedural question here? So why do you have to renumber, and why can't you just not reuse that at a different?
We could leave, we could leave it open.
Yeah.
We could leave it open. We could.
So can you, to the point, can you leave it open when it comes back for, in two weeks, and use that number?
Yes.
Or, no?
That's what we.
Well, I think it'd be easier just to renumber them.
Well, it's not, it's not necessary. Whatever the group feels, we could.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the village clerk, because she's the one who's got to do the work on this.
Yeah.
So what is it you would prefer to do? I'm not trying to make more work. Trying to keep this easy here.
I'd rather just renumber them, and I'll take care of it when I get upstairs.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Then B, just for the, so the record's clear, B would become twenty dash zero eighty-three, C.
No, eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
C would become twenty dash zero eighty-three.
But it's pulled.
No, C.
No.
No, C is not pulled.
No.
D would become twenty dash zero eighty-four.
E is pulled.
E is pulled.
F would become twenty dash zero eighty-five. G would become twenty dash zero eighty-six. H would become ordinance twenty dash zero eighty-seven, and I would become ordinance twenty dash zero eighty-eight.
Okay. Anything further with the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda is corrected.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve it as corrected. It's Trustee Dunham and Trustee Medei. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. Committee reports. Where to start?
We need to, we would consider the remaining items.
Yes, exactly. So the first item that was pulled is the flights, flight training school, which is an item that I pulled and asked to have some further discussion. So I know this has been discussed twice, once at the Schaumburg Regional Airport Commission, and then once under Transportation. I will keep it relatively brief. My concern here is that, and this is no offense, are you the petitioners here? Okay. No offense to the petitioners, but we are into like a third or fourth flight school here that is not meeting minimum standards, and it seems like we constantly are skipping, asking for variations from the minimum standards, and I'm not sure that's appropriate. They seem like, you know, very enthusiastic and want to do, I'm sure, a great job and, and all that, but it doesn't seem like there's really sufficient, how do I want to put it, sufficient, sufficientness to be in, into a flight school. So just because someone has one plane and decides that they want to be, gee, I'd like to run a flight school, to me, doesn't seem sufficient. There's minimum standards for a purpose of having minimum standards, and that is to ensure that we have people that are sufficient enough to be able to run the business at the airport. Otherwise, we could have ten of these shown up because everybody wants to run a business. That's just my feeling. I don't think we should be doing the flight school based upon Any comments from the board? Want to hear from the petitioner?
Again, or I can, I can explain what we have, kind of had a conversation about it to Transportation Committee, if you would like. The thought process was really twofold around the recommendation to approve the variance request. One is that, as you, as you said, we've done it several times in the past, so there has been precedent set to allow flight schools to start with. allow flight schools to start with less than the minimum requirements in the, you know, than, than what the village has as, as minimum requirements. The second piece, and I think more importantly, is the fact that there is currently a review of the minimum requirements for flight schools at the airport. And actually, I think for all businesses at the airport, that is going to be presented to, I think, the airport advisory committee in the near future to significantly, as, as I understand it, to significantly change the minimum requirements and look at the business plan more holistically as, does this make sense as a business? Does their, does their business model and does their business plan look like it's a viable business and to move forward from that perspective? And so based significantly, I think, on those two things, we made the, the recommendation to approve, to have the village board approve it. Trustee Kozak, if.
Yeah, I concur with that. And the fact that the matter was, there's other, other businesses out there that are below minimum standards as it is right now. And them coming in, and I thought the fact that bringing in a new business, new thoughts, new ideas, possibly getting new, new traffic into the area, would draw new traffic coming to see what they're, they're offering to the village of Schaumburg would be good for the airport. Not only in gas sales, maybe just stop at Pilot Pete's and this type of thing. I just thought it was a good promotion for the village to take a look at and extend out and reach out to the, the new petitioners that are coming into the village. And I thought it would be good for the village of Schaumburg to extend. And I don't have a problem with having multiple flight schools out there. That doesn't bother me. I'm not concerned with just one out there. I think we can have, we got the room to go with two out there or three if that situation arises down the road.
I wasn't, I didn't make the transportation meeting, but I was at the airport commission meeting and so I heard everything. I kind of concur with both of them. Also, I'm looking forward to us looking at the minimum only because I think we may be quite stricter than some other airports in competition. I also think that the variation for this likely is probably a positive thing because this is a, this is not a very competitive flight school or business. It's more of an aerobatic, you know, it's, it's, it's a different type of flight school. It's, it's got its own individuality. So I, I would recommend that we, we accept this.
Other questions? Just trustee Sullivan?
Yes, this is a very unique flight school and it's an acrobatic flight school. They teach pilots things that they can't get anyplace else, as I understand it, as we were told at the SRAK. And I think it would be a great amenity to the Schaumburg Regional Airport to have them. They also have plans for expansion before they even opened up. They plan on leasing two more airplanes, possibly over the next year or so. And, and so they plan on expansion. They don't plan on just staying with one airplane.
Questions? No?
Yes.
Trustee Conley.
Yeah, reading this, I, I felt that we have been giving variances for several years now and we really need to look at our standards because if we're just going to give variances, we should change them. And when I read the standards, some of them, I thought that they don't meet, are pretty strict, like ten hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, this is.
Minimum six aircraft.
And six aircraft. I mean, I, I, I think these are very difficult standards to meet because often this is a hobby that someone is trying to get into when they're learning to fly. And having these kind of hours and, and some of the others. So I, I'm okay with this and with the thought that we're looking forward to seeing some changes in these minimum standards.
So I will say that, and I don't want to get into it now because we are, we will end up having some further discussion. But I'll be concerned about changing minimum standards for the sake of trying to meet something that, you know, why, why is the standard being changed? And so I'll, I'll be concerned about that. I want to make sure that we just don't allow anybody who decides wants to open a business just, can open a business. It's, that's not what this airport, how it's been run in the past, and I'm concerned about running it that way in the future. There again was minimum standards set aside for a specific purpose of being able to, to make this viable and trying to ensure that we got someone who's viable that will be able to run and support. We've had, as I mentioned, at least three, if not four, other flight schools that have come through the same way and have all, are no longer there and at least one or two of them that still owe us money. So that's just my comment. If there's no other comments from the board, trustees Dunham?
I abstain from the vote at SRAK partially to make the point that if the current minimum standards are not being met, depending on the reason why, that it was time to develop new minimum standards. And I think that's, that's under, you know, that's under discussion, consideration right now. I agree with the mayor that we should have minimum standards that are going to make it, you know, difficult, not necessarily impossible, but somewhat difficult for a casual business to try to open up at the airport. Well, let's see how we do and, and that kind of thing. I think there needs to be, there, there need, there needs to be some specificity about what these standards are. The standards that we have now were developed when really none of us knew a heck of a lot about airports in general. And some of the folks that developed those minimum standards aren't here anymore. There was, looking back on it, I'm not sure what criteria they used and, and so forth. And, and why our minimum standards are different and perhaps more restrictive than those of other airports. I'm still waiting on an answer to that question. So I voted to abstain strictly to hopefully motivate the, you know, the, those who are working on the standards now to get it done and get it back to us and so forth. It would be my preference to wait on this until, you know, we have the, the standards that we all agree with in place. But I do recognize that this particular set of folks who want to put the flight school in probably have a little bit more experience and a little bit more foundation to them than some of the ones that we've had in the past. So I'm still kind of conflicted about that. But that's, that's the only comment that I'm going to make right now.
So there's no motion that's been made.
No, that's correct.
So far. If someone wanted to make one of the appropriate motions.
I think trustee Conley here.
Go ahead.
Comment.
Sorry.
Well, I could wait. But to, to, to go on what George said, when I read this, when I read this, this, this is not like someone who's coming in from out of state or out of town or just from even coming from another. These folks have been long-term renters and users of our airport and they live here in the community. So I think our risk with these folks is much less than some of the ones that we've had in the past, where they were from out of state and wanted to, to offer services here. And we did something, we, we allowed minimum standards and then they went out of business. In that respect alone, since it seems to be pretty general agreement that these standards haven't been looked at in years and might be more restrictive than others. As I say, I have much less concern about these folks than some others.
Anyone else?
Frank.
No.
I think Frank had his hand up.
No, I was just going to make a motion if you're done. I would make the motion to go ahead and recommend that we accept the application from Holiday Airways to operate a flight school at the Schaumburg Regional Airport for the purpose of flight training and includes required resolution.
Which would become resolution twenty dash eighty three. At way first reading.
Second, eighty three?
Yeah.
Second.
Oh, thank you. But the number is correct. We'll prove the resolution as twenty dash eighty three.
Eighty three, okay. Everybody have that? Who, the motion was made by trustee Kozak, seconded by trustee Bishki.
Okay.
Any further conversation? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Hi.
Trustee Conley.
Hi.
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Dunham. Trustee Medei.
Hi.
Trustee Bishki.
Hi.
Five eyes, one abstention. Motion carries. Next item is from zoning board of appeals. It's item C. Asked to do with recommendation to approve an amendment to municipal code, title fifteen, chapter one fifty four pertaining to off-street parking and loading. This item was pulled by trustee Kozak. Please proceed.
Thank you. Really, I'm, I'm zeroing in on one part of this whole amendment, amendment on this municipal code. I'm looking at the short-term parking issues, which I'd like to have sent back. If you've been around town lately, you'll see it, Uber, Eat Scrub and so forth and so on. All the restaurants are putting up the signs for them drivers to come up and that and just pull in and stop in there. All, all them signs are going up in front of the places. The big problem that I have is Jewel. Now, if you go over to Jewel over on Roselle Road, they took up their whole north side of their parking lot. Where you pull in there, the main road, they took, I think, eight or 10 spots up. And that's just strictly for where you call in your order and the guy runs out and loads your car. And then they got a couple other spots, I think, four periodically throughout, throughout their parking lot of places that you can pull in and have your groceries delivered to your car. I have a problem with, with the service that they're supplying to the residents. The problem is the fact that, first of all, they didn't come and get a permit to do this. I don't believe, did they, Brian? I don't, I don't think the way I understand it, they just arbitrarily went ahead and did this thing because we were checking with Marissa and Julie on this thing. So they, they've got to come back and reconfigure what they're going to do there. And the other thing is, I, what my concern is taking up all the premium spots. I mean, now they didn't touch the handicap spots. Then we're fine. But these are people that are running in for a gallon of milk, a loaf of bread and stuff like that. Now they got to park all the way out in the outlot. Whereas Jewel's got fifteen, 20 people. If you go in that store right now, they're running around with carts with the blue Big Benz. They're filling the orders. They could just as easily run them big carts out to the car, parked out 10 spots, opposed to taking the front spots away from the people that are patronizing the stores. Not only there, but I mean, it's going to happen at Target. It's going to happen, all the other big stores around in town that are, that start offering this service to the residents. So I'd like to see, I think Julie's looking into this thing possibly down, down the road. So I'd like to see some type of, you know, standards set up as to where they can or where they cannot park down the road.
If I understand you correctly, you're basically talking about like what we do with restaurants, where restaurants can't take all the premium spots for those that are dropping off their cars. They're same concept.
Valet, pardon.
Valet parking.
Well, you could, I guess you could toss valet to a lot of places are taking up the front spots there also.
So under valet parking, we require that they can't take all the front spots. They have to move them off to a further distance away.
Yes, we could look at that also. Thank you.
Okay. So that's similar to what you're talking about. Okay.
Julie, do you have any?
Anyone else?
I think Julie might have some comments on this one. I know her and trustee Kozak did have a direct conversation about Jewel. And I think she's addressed that situation. But if there is desire for further discussion, we can refer it back to PBD for further review. Go ahead, Julie.
So yeah, let me, let me say specific to the Jewel. They have eight spaces. The existing ordinance, as written prior to this study of the code amendment, would allow short-term parking spaces only 2% of the total. So the proposed amendment, actually, when it was heard first by the zoning board of appeals, recommended that any surplus spaces could be used for, for short-term parking spaces. And curbside type spaces isn't carved out. It would actually be just included within that total. The zoning board did have some concerns about that. They asked staff to take another look. And so it went to a second meeting with the zoning board of appeals. And at that time, the zoning board recommended approval of the staff's modified recommendation, which is that 4% or a maximum of 15 stalls could be reserved for some type of short-term parking spaces. So again, that could be short-term where a customer is running in to get something and coming out. Or curbside would be included in that number. And there's a couple provisions there. So it's a maximum of 15 spaces. It does not include a provision for where those spaces would be. I mean, obviously, most businesses are going to put this type of spaces actually close to the building based on their business models. You know, obviously, if you're coming for a quick pickup as a customer, you don't want to park too far away. And if you're running things out to the customers, what we've heard is that it would be too difficult to put those as remote spaces. But it does include a provision on the size of the signage. And the signage that Jewel has installed exceeds what would be permitted under the ordinance. So they have some signage on, for example, their cart corrals that wouldn't be allowed. And their short-term signage on the parking stalls is larger than what would be allowed for short-term parking. So, you know, if there was, I think, any amendment to be made, staff would recommend that we carve, maybe carve out the curbside and allow different signage for the curbside. But in terms of changing the locations or decreasing the number, staff would caution against that because based on our current retail environment, even prior to COVID, we've included this change to the ordinance to allow our retailers to have maximum flexibility and really be able to adapt to all of our changing consumer trends that we're seeing.
Okay, let me, can I ask Julie one question, please?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, let's look in the shopping center over by Taco Bell on Roselle Road down there on the east side of Roselle. Now, there's about 15, 18 stores down there and they're all, all they are is one rented stall back, you know, they're the small stores, small fronts. So if each one of them took a stall in the front of their building, then they would basically have the whole front stalls taken up by, you know, quick, or quick, whatever you want to call it, quick response or, you know, for Uber or whatever they want like that. That's going to be acceptable?
Well, it would be, the way the code is written is it's 4% of the zoning lot. So in that, I believe that's one, one zoning lot. Maybe the Taco Bell is carved out, but the shopping center is one zoning lot. So it would be a maximum of 4% or 15 parking stalls for the entire center.
Okay, thank you. So they could spread them out proportionally.
Yeah, they could spread them out proportionally. And the stalls, the stalls are not supposed to have anything unique to the business. But with the curbside, what we're seeing is that the way they're branded, for example, they're red at Target, they're red at Jewel. So people generally know what business those types of spaces are for.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? I think there's just enough confusion that maybe we should recommend that this be sent back to planning, building, development so you can have further conversation or?
I'd like to see some more clarification coming out of this. Yes.
Okay.
Can I speak to the issue then?
Sure.
I mean, I, I agree. Things like handicap parking spaces, we should say, you have to have so many. There's federal laws that involve this. We have a very changing retail environment. I go to that Jewel. If I don't go to it, I pass it very, very often. And there, that's pace, that place, even on a Saturday, the biggest shopping day, has plenty of parking spaces. Now, I must say, I pulled in and I thought, oh, I can't park there. But I think businesses need to have the flexibility. Part of that is saying to people, okay, you can park here and you call in, give your license number and they'll put it in your trunk if that's what you need. This is a big help for handicap people who don't. This is a big help for handicap people who don't get, can't get out of the car potentially. But I would think a business like Jewel is going to monitor this. And if they say, all right, we've had eight spaces, we've never had more than four or six people in there, we can cut these back. But they're business people, they want to make their customers happy. I, I don't understand why we think we have to have that level of control over private business. It just seems that's government overstepping their bounds in something like this. If I have a store, a place that I don't, there's a restaurant, for instance, that I went with my brother, my brother had a big to-do with them over valet parking, we've never been back again. I mean, if, if you're not happy with the situation because you don't think you can park in close enough or safely enough or whatever, you take your business somewhere else. But I don't think we should be telling businesses where they can or can't put this type of parking. It's just an overstep.
Me too, Tom.
Trustee Dunham?
Uh, and Julie, are you, you're still here? I think I heard you say that in some of the shopping centers that you're familiar with, Target will have pickup spaces in one color and somebody else will have them in another color, so forth. Do, why don't we just, if, if we're going to do this at all, why don't we decide that X number of spaces in said parking lot are for curbside pickup and not worry about which spaces belong to what store?
Well, I think in some of the, I mean, the stores have a business model for the curbside pickup where they want to designate specific spaces. So in the Target, in most of those stores, though, it's pretty obvious which, which store you're coming to. So, for example, I drove by Target last week just to make sure there was nothing that said Target on their curbside. But, I mean, there are overhead red, you know, bars that are, that are defining the spaces. And it's very, very clear that as a customer, I would be going to Target just based on the branding. I think the issue was traditionally that if you have, as trustee Kozak mentioned, many small tenants and particularly in a neighborhood center, like a dry cleaners or a restaurant or some other service uses, and they wanted short-term customer spaces where a customer could quickly pop into the establishment, then, and it was really a very shared parking environment, the concern was that you wouldn't want to carve out individual. And so that's really just kind of worked itself out based on the nature of whether it's a shared environment or a large big-box retailer.
Well, I'm not sure if that answered my question, though. Again, if you've got two, say you've got two retailers that are in, you know, in a given shopping center, are you saying that retailer A can carve out X number of spaces and paint them, paint those spaces in their favorite color? Retailer B can do the same. And yet, customers for retailer, retailer B, if their spaces, their colored spaces are full, can't park in the pickup spaces for retailer A?
I think we haven't, I guess my answer would be that we haven't encountered that. The code says that you cannot have advertising, advertising is the exact word that's used. You can't have advertising on the short-term spaces. And most of the times when we've seen them where they're branded so specifically for a specific retailer, it's like a really large retailer where nobody else would park in them anyway, like a Target or a Jewel or a Kohl's.
I think the other point that bears mentioning here is that the village is not enforcing the short-term spaces. I mean, this is something that's left up to the store, and I'm not even sure that they would risk towing someone who may park there to take a trip inside the store. So I just want to make it clear that even though this is permitted under the code, it's not something that the village is enforcing for the establishment.
Right.
So to trustee Dunham's question, if retailer B's customers parked in retailer A's spaces, there aren't really any consequences associated with that.
That's what I was wanting to find out, thank you.
Okay, it sounds like, I still believe it sounds like there's still some question over it and maybe give a greater opportunity to make sure it's good. I personally don't see any problem with the names on there, but I don't quite understand, so, and I didn't ask the question ahead of time, so my apology. But if the board would agree, I would suggest we send it back to planning, building, development for just at least, if it doesn't change, at least have further conversation.
So moved.
Second.
And can we attach a date to that, honey?
Next meeting is November fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Are we sure it's planning, building, and development and not transportation?
Yeah. Sorry, Jack, it's yours. So the recommendation is to refer this back to planning, building, development.
Could be public safety.
Yeah, i.e. Jack Sullivan's could be, for a date certain of November fifth. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Yep.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries, thank you very much. Let's see, was there anything, I don't think there was any other recommend?
No, the liquor license.
No more committee reports, right?
Liquor license. Oh, the people waiting.
Yeah, I'll get to that, okay. But no other items pulled off, okay. If it's okay with the board, I'm going to step back. And we're going to go back to liquor license requests. We have the individuals here for the class A liquor license request for Bonchan, is that correct? Okay, would you please come forward? This is at fourteen oh eight East Gulf Road, new owner, and we have Azia Ugani. Okay, not sure if I pronounced that correctly, all right.
Yes.
So just give us your name and address for the record, and then we'll, we'll ask you a couple of questions.
Uh, my name is Azia Ugani and applying for the liquor license for Bonchan, address fourteen oh eight East Gulf Road.
Okay, so as new owner, are you have any plans to change anything?
No, we don't want to apply anything, we just changed the ownership.
Just the ownership, so it's just basically a title change to the?
Yes, it's a franchise.
All right, so everything else remain the same, okay. Questions, comments from the board? No? Okay, I ask that, starting tomorrow, you can come and visit the liquor commissioner's office, which is also the mayor's office upstairs, and you can pick up the application. You have to go through a background check and fingerprinting, and once that's, comes back approved, then a liquor license will be issued.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on, we have comments from the audience. So we'll start with anyone within the village hall. Is certainly welcome to come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, we're going to move on to anyone on the Zoom call that wishes to address the board. Not sure how we're doing this, raise a hand, a chat or something? Okay, if you can unmute. Okay, not seeing anyone there, we thank you all for being there. We're going to move on, council report?
Yes, may I thank you, as we proceed along our way through the COVID situation, I would ask for a motion to extend the proclamation declaring a local state of emergency originally made on March twentieth, twenty twenty, until the adjournment of the next meeting of the Village of Schaumburg Board of Trustees.
Move to approve it, Steve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as stated, I do have a question. This doesn't make reference to a particular proclamation, I guess. I know we're on, what, emergency order number five, does that pertain to this?
Correct, so the reason it does, if there's no new one, it's just that the way the municipal code is written, the authority, your authority has to be approved by the village board, and there's language in there that suggests it only can be, that approval can only be until the next regular meeting.
Okay.
So whether the, whether the order changes or not, the approval of whatever order you have entered should be reapproved as a, as a cautious, valid and suspenders method.
All right, thank you, meant to ask that question last time. Okay, we have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries, president's report. Have a couple of items here, first one is a recommendation from the liquor license, liquor commissioner to issue a twenty percent rebate, call it a COVID rebate, for class A, class C, and class F-one liquor license holders. And these are the ones that, these are the restaurant holders that handle both the sit-down and the carry-outs. And the idea is to be able to give them some relief from the COVID situation that they've been under and the constraints, and to allow to get a small reduction, and this will pertain only to those that are current active liquor license holders. Came from liquor license commissioner's office.
This is a one-time deal?
It's a one-time, yes it is.
So moved, second.
So a motion and a, from trustee Dunham, seconded from trustee Maday. Any other comments? The clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I think they will be very happy to hear that. They will receive a letter along with the rebate check indicating that the board has agreed to provide this to them. So thank you very much. Next item is a recommendation to appoint Dr. Farnsworth, he's an M.D., F.A.A.P., not sure what that is, to the Board of Health upon completion of the appropriate documentation. This one actually was something that I thought I had done back in February, apparently had not. And he's actually been sitting on the Board of Health and kind of wondering when this was going to happen. So it's kind of catching up with where things are at. The committee's very pleased to have him, they've liked, welcomed his input, so I would appreciate concurrence.
So moved, second.
So motion and a second to concur with the recommendation to make the appointment. Any further conversation, will the clerk call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries, thank you very much. I do have a couple other items to make mention of. One is, as you're aware, Schaumburg was awarded the Municipal of the Year Award by the Illinois Real Estate Journal. And I believe Matt Frank picked this information up, but this was, other finalists were in this for the twenty twenty award, was the City of Aurora. So I think we did pretty good in, this is for economic development, marketing, business relationships, et cetera. So this was a very good thing to have, and all of Schaumburg should be proud that the staff in particular, and Brian, and all that they have done in order to be able to receive such an award. It's the first time we've, we've received this, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so this is really pretty good considering how many municipalities are in the state of Illinois, this is pretty, pretty amazing. So they should be commended for it, and just want to make mention, you're all aware of it, you've seen it before. Okay, thank you. Another one I have is, this one was sent to myself and Chief Wolf, but it's really for Chief Wolf. It's from the Illinois Department of Corrections. And they apparently had done a complete review of our municipal lockup and reviewed the logistics and so forth, and have awarded us or indicated that we have met all these standards that are, that are applied there and for, and done this audit. And all the inspection reports are available, so I thought it was good to note that we are meeting everything, all the criteria that we should be for this, and that there is no issues, no error reports or anything of that kind to us, so that was very good. Chief should be commended that we're maintaining that in high quality. Another one, embarrassed Jamie a little bit. Jamie sent this in, an email in indicating that there was an incident at his home and needed assistance. And there was a number of firefighter, paramedics that were arrived, and I know I'm not going to get these names correctly. So Brian, feel free to jump in with me. We have firefighter, paramedic Scott Capacious, okay? Firefighter, paramedic Kevin Leska, firefighter, paramedic Stephen Gotham Dyke, maybe? Lieutenant, paramedic Robert Shanley, firefighter, paramedic Evan Zibel. All had, came to Jamie's house, assisted him, and he was very grateful for their effort and said they were very courteous and took good care of him, so he's very pleased with that. And we're glad everything turned out well for you. So that's to the chief and to staff. And that is all I have. Next item is manager's report.
I just have one item for board action this evening. It is Schaumburg's tradition to cancel the second board meetings in both November and December. Allow all of us to spend more time with our families, and so I'm recommending that we follow that tradition again this year and cancel the village board meetings of November twenty-fourth and December twenty-second, twenty twenty.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second to concur with the recommendation from the village manager, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carries, thank you. New business, anything under new business? No, unfinished business. Trustee comments and mentions. Trustee Bishki.
Thank you. This morning I attended the Schaumburg Business Association's Good Morning Schaumburg, typically breakfast meeting, but it was held by Zoom, so it wasn't a breakfast meeting. But they had a presentation by a team of doctors from Amita Health. And it was probably the most interesting Good Morning Schaumburg presentation that I've, I've attended. Let me say second most because President Daley's state of, the state of Schaumburg was number one. But this would be the second most exciting presentation. But what they talked about, and really they, not that we need a history lesson in COVID, but they started back in January from the first case in Illinois and the second case in the United States that was admitted to St. Alexis Health Center in Hoffman Estates. Really all through, you know, current, current day, they talked about, there was an anesthesiologist, there was a infectious disease doctor, and there was a pulmonary and critical care doctor. And they each talked from their own area of expertise. And the anesthetist actually traveled to New York in April timeframe, right in the heat of the battle, so to speak, and showed some pictures from the hospital that he was in and talked through the different treatments that had been approved. I didn't realize there was, there's been over three hundred and fifty different medicines approved to treat COVID. And they've been approved and they've been removed, and currently the CDC has no approved medicine to treat COVID. But it was just an extremely interesting presentation, bringing us up to date and talking about how their, their, the way they attack this virus is, has, has changed. And, and the chief operating officer from Amita Health was also on the line and talked through the different procedures that they had changed in their hospitals so that when you come in the door, you know that it's a safe environment, you get your temperature taken, you have to wear a mask. They reiterated the fact that, you know, it is safe now to come in and do any, any procedures that you need to have done, whether it's routine procedures or surgeries, elective or critical surgeries. But the, but the key thing that one of the doctors said was that even with all of the therapies that they've used over the, over the timeframe, that the therapies are still not the game changer in fighting this virus. that the therapies are still not the game changer in fighting this virus. And they said three things. Wash your hands, wear a mask, and social distance. And they said those three things are still the best way to protect yourself and to protect others. So it was really, really a great presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on, we have an executive session this evening. Two items, first one in accordance with Section C, subsection, Section 2, subsection C, 11 of the Open Meetings Act litigation, or an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court, administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or eminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into minutes of the closed meeting. Second item is, in accordance with Section 2, Sub C, number one of the Open Meetings Act personnel, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee with terminus viability. Those are the two items we're going into executive session. Will we be looking to return?
We will not. We will get no formal motion.
So I'm looking for a motion then to go into executive session for these two items with no intent to return.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kozak.
Hi.
Trustee Conley.
Hi.
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Dunham.
Hi.
Trustee Madei.
Hi.
Trustee Bishki.
Hi.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.